Does someone want to approve the agenda? Any sec. Thank you, Terry. Did someone second that?
I'll second.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Okay, so we have old business, oh sorry, approval of the minutes from December 12th. I did not read those.
I have to admit, I...
I got caught up. I meant to read them this morning.
I was lacking in my reading as well.
Can you put those off, or is that a problem?
Yeah, I can put them off.
Okay. Um, did... All right, whatever. They'll be better. Yeah, because they have to comment on it. Okay, so that makes sense. So, old, moving on to old business, application 18-19, Peter L. O'Brien and Natalia V. O'Brien, 36 Low Beach Road, represented by Cohen, they requested to withdraw with, without prejudice. So, can I, can I make that motion, or does...
I'll make the motion. You want to make the motion?
No, no, go for it.
I'll make the motion to allow them to request to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so now moving on to new business, this is application 1-20, Jill A. Aruho, is that how you say that?
Araho.
Araho, 40 Hooper Farm Road, Arthur Reed representing.
We're using this, uh, this thing? Yeah, well, I'll...
Or stand on a chair.
Or, or give you a soapbox to stand on.
Oh, come on.
Okay, for the applicant attorney, Arthur Reed. This is a corollary to an application that you handled two months ago. In 2010, my clients were in the process of divorcing, they had two houses on the lot. One fronting on Fairgrounds Road, the other fronting on Hull Lane. The lot was slightly undersized, and it was, a variance was granted in order to enable them to split the lot, so that the husband could get the Hull Lane undersized lot, and the wife could get the front lot, fronting on Fairgrounds Road. You put a condition on that application, that there be no further additions to ground cover without permission from this board, and that there be no secondary dwelling. In connection with the husband's lot, we appeared before you two months ago to ask that those conditions be removed, and you granted that modification by unanimous vote. We're now asking you do the same for the wife's lot, which is actually a full-sized lot, and has ample additional ground cover available under the, under the formula, which of course would be applicable in any event. Secondary dwelling would obviously require planning board approval, as it always does. There's no immediate plan to do that, but we thought that it would be good housekeeping to take care of eliminating those conditions on this lot, as we did on the other lot. My client is here, if there's any question, but that's, that's what it's all about.
Okay.
I, I didn't sit on the lot, I don't know where they put us. Was this, um, just bring me up to speed here, was this at one point Joseph Bendy's property?
Yes. Joseph is the husband, and he and his former wife Jill, who is here, split the property when they divorced 10 years ago.
Um, okay.
That's crazy.
And, and, and her, her lot meets zoning.
Her lot meets zoning, yes.
But the issue is that there is this, this existing restriction.
Exactly. Existing conditions of the variance that was granted, which as I say, have now been removed from Joseph's lot, and we're asking that they be removed from hers.
Does anybody on the board recall why we put those restrictions? I mean, I don't...
In 2010?
Yeah.
I don't.
Why, again, I hate to admit it, but I didn't do as much reading as I probably should have done, but, um, what was the original relief?
The original relief was variance to allow the creation of the undersized lot, which was conveyed to Joseph. There was another condition in there, I believe, about a setback issue, but that, that related to his lot, that's been corrected since.
It's in the packet on page 29.
You, uh...
You opposed it.
Yeah.
I know, I do recall that part. But, having said that, I opposed it, the ground cover issue didn't materially change. Even if it was one lot, the ground cover would be, let's say X, whatever X is.
Yeah, it was ground cover available, and it, the way the decision came out, it was no further ground cover without further relief from the board. Well, there's no particular reason why they shouldn't be able to, and that's the way it was handled on his lot, when that came before the board two months ago. Go, be able to go up to the maximum that's permitted in the, in the district on that individual lot.
Yeah, I think the, if I recall now, I think the, the discussion centered around the fact that, you know, it was a pretty big bite at the apple to create an undersized lot, and the quid pro quo is no more ground cover.
Right. Without, without further relief.
Yeah, yes, without further relief. And I didn't sit on the next one, did I? Where the further relief was granted?
That was two months ago.
No, you were...
I probably would have voted no for that, too, because it seemed to me, again, at the time, the bite at the apple was pretty big. Right, you get a, you get a, you get a lot that doesn't meet zoning. And, but, anyway.
Yeah, I, I think, to put it simply, I mean, we were, we approved it on the other lot, I don't know how we could switch gears. I mean, how, how is this different? It's actually more conforming.
This is, this is actually, what, conforming in all dimensional respects, yes.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I agree, we, we, you know, made the decision a couple of months ago in October to remove the conditions for the other lot, they both created it. I don't see how we don't do it on this one, especially when this one's more conforming.
Feels a little bit to me like a death by a thousand cuts, but...
Maybe.
I'm already pretty cut up, so...
I don't think there's anything more to cut after this one.
Yeah.
You'll find something, aren't you?
I mean, I don't, I was thinking about, I don't, I don't really remember the, the conversation in October, but... And I don't remember 2010.
Yeah, you sat on it.
I know, I sat on both of them. But I trust my logic in both instances.
Yeah, no problem, no worries, but, uh...
So, does any, is any, does anyone have any questions or comments? Is there anyone else in the public to speak about this? Any of the board members have anything else to say?
Now, I'll put a motion forward to approve the application as requested.
I'll second it.
Do you want to, let's, let's vote this way over, so Jim, you're number five, Mark, you cannot vote.
Okay.
Okay. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, yeah.
Did you oppose?
Yeah.
Again.
Yeah.
Surprise.
And, I'm sorry, the others just looked for my notes.
So it's Jim, myself, it's Jim over.
Jim, and...
One, two, three, four.
And, and, I'm sorry, Jim and Jeff.
If you want minus Mark.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
I almost came back in October for it, but...
Really?
Couldn't quite make it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So, next up is 220 Nicole Gross and Carl Gross, 72 Cato Lane, represented by Bodett, Rick Bodett.
Thank you very much. Rick Bodett for the applicants, Carl and Nicole Gross. The, the property you're looking at is 72 Cato Lane, it's an R10 zoning district. It's an oversized lot, it's about 22,000 square feet, in a district that requires 10,000 square feet. The structures on the property comply with the zoning bylaw in all respects, except for one, and that's why we're here today. In 2018, the applicants applied for building permit, or issued a building permit, to construct a solar hot water heater system on the south side of the property, you probably see that in the, in the survey we provided, was installed by Nantucket Solar Solutions, and, at the time, I think, or prior to them applying for the permit, the contractor, Solar Solutions, engaged in some emails with Marcus, asking, hey, can we put these types of solar systems in, so, setbacks? And you see, I've provided those emails. You know, Marcus's response in general was, yeah, but, you know, keep them as far out as you can, but, and Marcus's logic there was that there's a provision of 40A that exempts, or I should say, that prohibits towns from unreasonably regulating the installation of solar systems. Anyway, that was Marcus's logic in allowing, telling this contractor they could put it in the setbacks. So, anyway, they did, you'll see from the survey, it's 1.3 feet into the setback, so it's about 8.7 feet away from the lot line, where it should be 10. In connection with the sale last month, we tried to close out the permit, and the building commissioner said he disagreed with Marcus, and wouldn't sign the permit, so we'd get a CO on these things. So, we immediately applied, and are requesting a special permit to reduce the side setback, assuming to the bylaw in the R10 district, to five feet, as opposed to 10 feet. And, and so, we, we can certainly answer any questions, we'd appreciate that relief, and obviously, we're willing to have a condition that no further structures in the setback without relief. I also have, just so you guys know what we're looking at here.
I've been in this site.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks.
So, looking at the emails from Marcus, what, you know, he encourages them to not be in the setback, but it says, they may be, what, what he says is they may be constructed within the setback areas if necessary.
Yeah.
So, can you demonstrate that this was necessary? Because it looks like, I mean, I don't know what the concrete patio looks like, but couldn't they have just put it, slid it down on that same side, and put it on the concrete patio?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I think that what's necessary is that they're as close to the house as possible, and the hot water tank, I think, is right below this area, because the, I think the glycol or glycine, whatever that chemical in there is, comes right down, gets heated up by the sun, and then comes right down and heats the hot water in the tank, so. I mean, there's any number of places they could have put it, but I think they put it in the most logical place, where they thought, where the contractor thought it was necessary, and I don't, you know, I don't think that the contractor had any idea that they couldn't put it there. I mean, I think they probably took Marcus's email for what it was, which I think is, you know, we can put them in the setback, as long as we're not crazy about it, and they're sticking these things on lot lines.
Yeah, it seems to me that they reasonably reply, relied on, I mean, they, they asked for permission ahead of time.
Multiple times, actually.
They even said, they almost seemed to say, are you sure?
They did, yeah.
And he said yes, and now, now, should Marcus have checked it with Jim? Or, is that, that's...
Paul.
Paul.
Well, I don't think Paul was here at the time, is, is the issue.
Oh.
Or maybe part of the issue now. But, yeah, I agree, I, I mean, I think, you know, these guys did it right, right? They did what any of us would do, they just want to make, you know, wanted to make sure. It wasn't going to be a problem, and it was a problem in the end.
I disagree with you that's what everybody would do, because most people don't ask for permission.
I said any of us, I said, I was talking about us.
Yeah. I don't see how, I don't... Yeah, obviously, you have to stay on the south side of the house, too.
Yeah, yeah, no.
It's not like they could have gone around the corner.
No, no, yeah, right, I mean, that's why I was saying, like...
I'm sure, because then I swear, but...
Right.
They could have gone around the corner, but...
Wouldn't work as well, maybe.
We are where we are, and I...
I think, yeah, by virtue of the evidence from Marcus.
I mean, moving forward, I think the building department ought to figure out just what these things are, and where they ought to be, and where they shouldn't be.
Yeah, if you leave it gray like this. That's, that's a little bit of my concern, is I, I don't have a problem with it, but are we adjudicating this, 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 you know, Marcus's view, I think, if he were here, would say, we don't have to do anything, and they just need to work it out. I mean, do we want to, do we want to do this by saying that it's okay to put down the road, that, or, or are we saying that it's okay to do this based on the state law? The other property owners can put a solar structure within the setback?
Well, I don't think we're, you know, I don't, the argument can be made that we're, you know, there's something unreasonably withhold permission to install the solar array, I mean, they could have just moved it over to the edge of the house.
Yeah, or, I guess what I'm saying, is everyone going to come forward to us for a variance?
Well, that's why, that's where I was kind of getting with, at the, like, demonstrate that it's necessary, because, like, even if it was, if you say, oh, well, this is the side that gets the most sun, then, no matter where, just looking, I mean, I don't, obviously, it's, I don't, I'm not able to do it to scale, but if you moved it, if you slid it down any part of that side, it's still going to be in the setback, so...
Yeah, I'm not, I don't want to complicate it, but...
No, I agree with you.
If they agreed, they wouldn't, you wouldn't be here, and you don't need a variance.
Yeah, right, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, you raise a good point, because, I mean, I think this is prob, I'm gonna guess, this is the first one you guys have seen, I'm gonna, I don't know, but I'm gonna guess you're gonna see another one. I don't know of any, I'm just saying, that's exactly your point, is that...
Are they gonna, are they not gonna agree on every one?
Well, I'm sure you're right, because I think anyone else who did the same thing, right, in, in reliance on these guys, is gonna go to Paul to close it out, and Paul's gonna be like, sorry, guys. So, I mean, I think, you know, and again, it's kind of what Jeff said, too, is no doubt about the fact that, that the, either the building department has to get on the same page, or, I think, to fix this going forward, maybe the planning board should talk about an article...
Yeah, or...
That just defines this stuff.
I thought this was discussed before at town meeting.
I don't know.
With the solar panels, no?
I don't know.
I say go with Rick's idea.
Maybe they take, after this decision, they take the view that we, that you have to get a variance for each one, and maybe that's, that's okay, because it's, there's some reasonableness here, that someone's got to make that determination.
Right, I mean, I think...
Obviously, one person in the building department didn't...
Do we, do we have... The contractor was asking about a variance. Do we have, and did I miss it, do we have a letter or anything from the building commissioner?
No, I spoke with him, and I put that in my staff report.
Okay.
On whatever day I wrote that, I went and sat with him, and talked about it, and exactly what I said in my staff report, the nature of the discussion, which was that he didn't have any issue with this being approved by special permit, he just feels like he can't by default approve it, and where he comes from in Palmetto, I gather, they don't, this, they're not allowed to cite solar arrays, their local bylaw, so that's what he's familiar with, in Palmetto, their local bylaw prohibits citing of solar arrays and setbacks. So, he was just coming at it from the reasonablest, reasonable standpoint.
Right, where he didn't want to make that decision.
Exactly, he has no issue, I said, you understand, it's gonna be, if the special permit is granted, it'll be cited as where it is, they're not gonna move it, it's gonna be validating, he said, I don't have a problem with that, that's good.
Jim, I don't think we're necessarily adjudicating the whole matter, I mean, this, they, they asked for permission ahead of time, from maybe not everybody they should have, but, but Paul wasn't even here, so...
Yeah.
I, I don't think we're saying to, to the general public, put them in, you know, we're gonna bless every one.
Yeah.
Unless you go ask for permission, get permission, build it, and then told, oops, that's a mistake.
No, I understand the distinction, and frankly, it's, the way this is set up, it probably will come before us from here on in, because they don't, they can't agree on what reasonable is, you know.
Or maybe they will going forward.
And maybe that's better, I, I'm, I'm fine with it, I just wanted to bring up that point, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I would have more of a problem with it if they hadn't gone, obviously.
Yeah.
Didn't get permission from Marcus.
Right.
And then, then said, oops, we made a mis, we made a mistake.
Yeah.
Right.
It appears to me that, you know, the planning department...
Right, the first email from Marcus is, no variance is required, you're encouraged to leave as much space as possible between the, the solar and the property line.
I mean, unfortunately, there's this reasonable thing, which, you know, everybody has their own interpretation, it should either be allowed or not.
I agree, it's crazy, the Mass Law talks about it being a, what, what does the Mass Law say?
So, it says that no bylaw shall, shall unreasonably regulate someone's ability to put in solar arrays on a site. So, I think Paul's interpretation of that is, the town can't say, you can't put, the use, can't control the use, right? But Paul's, Paul's take on it is, it's reasonable for us to not let it in the setback.
Absolutely, of course not.
I don't, I don't personally disagree with that. Marcus does, you know, I mean...
Wouldn't allow this, right? Is that what you're saying? Or are you like Ed, saying that it, because that someone blessed it before?
I mean, because somebody blessed it, sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
If this was a new application, asking to put it in the setback, I would say absolutely not.
And I wouldn't come here.
I think that's the distinction.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, would you reasonably expect Marcus to, to check with the building commissioner? Yes, but the building commissioner wasn't there.
Yeah, well, maybe, but, but this, again, being this is the first one before us, there may...
This isn't the first time Marcus has sort of made his own decisions as to how these, you know, how these zoning questions are interpreted.
Yes, but, but also, before Paul came, there may have been 15 of these done, where it was fine, and it never was an issue, that we just don't know about. So, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, just, even just the first email I read from Marcus, it seemed like that, you know, these guys did the right thing, they asked, it was reasonable for them to ask the zoning enforcement officer if it was going to be an issue, his response gave them the freedom to put it where they needed to, and it's not, you know, it's, they didn't go crazy, it's not like, you know, way over. Can, reducing the setback, I, I would only want it to be in relation to, I would only want to validate this, I don't want to reduce the whole setback to five feet.
Hundred percent.
That no further intrusion within the setback can be allowed without further...
Of course.
Right, well, because there were two different questions, right? There's the question of, do we just validate where it's cited, or do we reduce the setback from 10 feet to 5 feet?
What you've done in these cases, when you're validating, using this section of the special permit, for consistency's sake, is say you're validating, say, no closer than 8.7, or whatever.
Yes, yep.
From the southerly, or whatever law line it is.
I'd like to go further and say, it's for the solar array only. It doesn't become, again, as those little cuts continue, it doesn't become a habitable space, so...
There goes the sunroom.
With no additional intrusions.
No, I could just see it, somebody...
Because that's a different thing, because there are diff, there are other questions where we reduce the entire setback from 10 to 5, I don't, I don't want to do that.
Because they're coming before usually.
Yeah, whatever, I, I mean, they can ask for it anytime, but I'm just saying, I, this one, I just want to, like, it's just for the solar panel.
And this is one of those circumstances where it's, you know, sort of an unintentional thing, but it wasn't based on a survey, so we couldn't, couldn't use that provision.
Yeah.
Eleanor, can we ask the building department to, sort of get together and determine, you know, amongst themselves whether or not these things, and how this should move forward?
Can you judge a call, and say, can you confer with your inspectors and the CEO, and come up with a policy that averts this sort of thing?
Yeah, because it's expensive for people, and time consuming, and...
Yeah, and there's a closing institution, so...
Well, I, you know, if we, if we do approve it, I'd like to make it on the basis that this was approved by the CEO. That's why we're...
Sure.
...a lot of other things.
Okay, all right.
And let that...
And again, it's only for the solar array. It has nothing to do with making the blanket statement, you can go up to that line.
No, it's just validating this...
This particular solar installation.
This particular solar water heater unit.
I mean, I guess, having said that, that, well, we have the dimensions of the thing, and, again, I guess the dimensions don't, yeah, they, they matter to some extent, but that's all part of the application, so that's what is approved.
Like, we could, you know, specifically, give the, you know, the width of that thing, 8.7 feet from the lot line, you know, whatever, 12 feet long, or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay. There's nobody in the public, so, anyone else on the board have any comments, questions? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the relief with the conditions that we've spoken about.
Okay.
I'll second your motion, even though I don't know why Jim hates solar energy.
All right, so, let's see, who, uh, Mark and Jeff are both alternates or members? Okay, so does anyone, do you want to, do you want to vote, Mark?
Sure.
Okay, so why don't we vote Karim down this way this time? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
May I ask, for the purposes of getting these things signed, I know you're leaving quite a while.
I am coming back and forth.
Will you communicate with your, your, and Mark, are you planning?
The Big Apple.
Okay, anybody else?
No, but we can, I mean, I think, can we just sign these now?
No, yes, I'm talking about the decision, and we can stay.
Okay.
Yes, please do sign them. Karim, are you planning on going away?
Here, Ed, look at this one.
As far as he knows.
I thought I signed all of these.
I'm here. I'll be in and out, but I'm, uh...
Okay.
I'm planning on scheduling my vacations around these meetings for the next few months.
I'm just thinking about getting decisions.
That's very considerate of you.
All right, I'm gonna admit to, I don't, did I get this one, the Stevens, or are we just getting this?
I just worked on it late last night and this morning, so...
All right, I'd like to read it before I sign it.
Can I send it to you? I, the only thing is that you're leaving tomorrow, that's why I wanted to...
I am.
So you can sign it, and she can hold your signature.
I will not file it until you've read it.
All right, fair enough.
And you've been okay with it.
Who, who, you wrote it, right, not, not Linda?
Yes, I would.
What makes a difference?
Definitely makes a difference.
I mean, not just Linda, for anybody who...
No, I, I shouldn't have said, well, no, Linda was the one, so I can't say it.
But, I mean, it makes a difference, if, it makes a difference on any decision that's not written by Eleanor.
I agree.
Pool?
What?
The mannequin pool?
Yeah. Did you sit on it? No, you didn't sit on it. All right, so, you're gonna hold that until you get the okay?
Yes, I'm gonna hold both of these until you've read them. The other one is the 40p application.
Refresh my memory.
Mike, I'm a village, John, brush your...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think you have negative on this.
I'm not signing that one, so...
You sat on it.
I sat on it, but I don't agree with it. I, I can still sign it, but I, I would hope you could get the four people who voted yes for it to sign it.
Oh, right.
Yeah, talk about, never mind.
Can we do a docu-sign on these, or no?
We've been discussing that, and...
Get a lot easier.
It is a lot easier.
I think they're, Eleanor and I happened to have this discussion yesterday, or two days ago, and, yeah, the, sometimes when you have to sign it in person, sort of, you get the paper in your hand, and you actually read it, versus, sometimes just...
Maybe we should go the other way and have a whack... Maybe we should go the other way and have a wax seal for each.
I like the wax seal. Should we each have one, though?
Yeah, yeah, gotta have your own.
I mean, I like it.
Blood, you do any blood, or, you know?
You can do it, actually.
There's some blood, it's just.
But how do I docu, how do I certify?
You can't, you'd have to, you can't notarize a docu-sign, I don't believe it.
I'm a person who don't like the idea, I'd really like to know.
Yeah, let's, let's have the suit, she's the chair.
No, no, it's not.
I'm willing to come to you, I know it's difficult to get into my building, I don't have a problem scurrying around the world finding.
I think the system works.
It's difficult to get to your building?
Well, for some.
It is in Mid-Island. No one ever goes by.
I drive by, I drive by your building probably 17 miles a day.
I do, too, and it's usually, I say, oh, I have to go sign something, and then I'm halfway down, milestone, I'm like, damn, I forgot.
If they put the rotary.
Yeah, the rotary, that was my problem, no rotary.
Anyway, I'm not gonna, the ones I'm asking you to sign are really more because Ed's leaving, and I'm just concerned.
Nice job, Ed.
Thanks.
Just saying. I won't be on vacation, I'm working.
In the 40B, I have to have filed from certain.
What are you doing in the Big Apple, working?
Well, I'm talking about looking at my computer, talking on my phone.
Can you ever drift your Starbucks office down the.
No, it says not gonna come to that.
Jimmy used to like the Starbucks office.
Yeah.
I just hang with Starbucks.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, in the city, Boston.
They're now places, you can, like, well, WeWorks is a little bit bigger, but, like, it's called, there's one called Spacious or something, where, you know, you wander in.
You could do it kind of à la carte, you can just sort of pay a fee for.
I think WeWorks is more, you have a little business.
Should we adjourn? Is anyone watching?
Well, you're the, you're the head, I thought there was other business.
We have to discuss this other thing with.
I was waiting for you.
I got nothing for me, people.
I'll make the motion.
I just, I can't take it off until I come in.
Okay, so we're not discussing other business?
No, because they're not here. Sorry, I started talking about the decisions, and then.